Welcome, everyone, to the January 21st Regular Board of Education Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sure I can do it right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, I'd like to welcome Jimmy Gallivan, our SHS Student Council President, to the podium for an update.
Good evening, all. I'd like to share some updates about recent happenings in our schools. Starting off with 21st century knowledge and skills, more specifically the arts. The Somers Musical Company presented their fall drum production of Clue onstage last month and are currently preparing for their spring musical production, which is Mean Girls. And the Class of 2026 Class Board is also hosting their district-wide town show this Friday at 5:30 PM in the high school. And the SHS Band and Guitar Ensemble has had a successful concert last Wednesday with lots of great performances. In athletics, winter sports are still going on with the championship season beginning to kick off. And also, congratulations to Miguel Iglesias for being named Player of the Week or Player of the Year in New York State Class A Football. In social, emotional, and physical wellness, more specifically counseling, the college certs process continues with juniors as students have begun their formal junior college meetings with counselors. In global citizenship, more specifically student life, the Class of 2026 Class Board is hosting a district-wide town show this Friday at 5:30 PM at the high school. Actually, I mentioned that earlier. And the Somers Triumph Music Honor Society recently took a trip to see The Great Gatsby on Broadway where they enjoyed a great performance and experience. Those are all of my reports for today, and I think we'll be back up shortly to talk about our conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. All right. This brings us, then, to our Tusker Pride section of the agenda. So this is our relatively new agenda. In the past few months, we instituted as a board to highlight different things going on in our schools by the students. So at this point, we would like to invite back up Jimmy along with the rest of the Student Council representatives and tell us about what the Student Council is up to or going to be up to in the next few weeks.
All right. Good evening, all, again. My name is Jimmy Gallivan, and I'm currently a junior at SHS, and I'm serving as the Student Council President this year. And also, I'd like to introduce some of my other fellow Student Council members here. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Oh, sure. My name's Julia Schmberger. I'm a senior at Somers High School, and I've served as our Public Relations Officer for the last two years.
I'm Augustus Infanti. I'm a junior, and I am currently the Vice President of our Student Council.
My name's Logan Weedman, and I am a junior, and I am an Officer-at-Large of Student Council.
So this past November, we had a group of roughly 40 students from our Student Council attend the annual Leadership Conference in Lake Placid hosted by the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities, otherwise known as NYSCLSA. NYSCLSA is our state leadership and Student Council Association, and along with Augustus Infanti, who's here with me tonight, I'm a member of NYSCLSA's Student Board. Augustus and I both played a role in planning and running our conference, but tonight I want to talk about all the student leaders from Somers who went and how incredible it was to be a part of that group. Being a student leader means being confident, organized, kind, and so many other things. And yet, every time I was at conference, whether it was in speaker sessions, workshops, meeting with other students, and more, whenever I saw a kid from Somers, they were always living up to that embodiment of a student leader. I had kids and, like, other Student Board members at the conference actually coming up to me and asking me, like, what about Somers made our students such good leaders and made our Student Council so strong? And in moments like that, I just, I felt really proud for all the work that we've done as a Student Council. And I think experiences like NYSCLSA have had a large part in this. Attending a conference like NYSCLSA really allows us students to truly learn about leadership and gain some hands-on experience in new skills from speakers, workshops, and also allows us to meet people from across the state. I was also, and personally, I think NYSCLSA has had a huge effect on my trajectory in my high school career. I honestly think if it wasn't for the leadership skills that I learned and how to be confident, how to be a better leader, that I wouldn't be here today as a Student Council President. So I think NYSCLSA is truly amazing experience, and I'm sure my other Student Council members would have a lot to say about that as well. Do you want to say anything?
So I was a first-time conference goer this year. So it was my first time at conference. I haven't gone in the past three years due to athletic reasons at our school. But as a first-time goer, I can say it's a very welcoming environment, especially from the kids at Somers. I immediately felt connected, and I immediately felt welcomed. I ended up going as Vice Conference Leader, which is, to put in short, one of the student leaders who help run the conference from a student perspective in Somers specifically because Ms. O'Shea, our advisor, is the Executive Director. So as Vice Student Leader, I, under Logan, he was our Head Student Leader, I felt very, not, not, I wouldn't say important, but I felt very loved. I felt very cherished by my Somers companions, and I felt very valued. It's just a completely different environment when you get to go with these students who, yes, we're all in Student Council together, but we're all on different committees, and we all come together for this one event. It's just something so special that I think if students are given the opportunity at Somers, they should 100% go. I'm a two-time, I'm a two-season, two-year captain of two sports at Somers, and I think NYSCLSA just brought my leadership to a new level and gave me so many different tools and techniques and ideas to bring back to our athletic department in areas that I think we might be lacking in. So I think it's important for students, especially like what Jimmy said, especially students from Somers where we have such a prominent stance at NYSCLSA, for us to really get involved in that community because I really think it's helped me personally bring, you know, some of that leadership from Student Council into the athletic world here at Somers, which is very important.
This year was my first year on the NYSCLSA Board. Me and Jimmy are representatives for District Four of NYSCLSA, and it was really a wonderful experience for me. All the people on the Board are insanely talented leaders from all around the state, from all different kinds of walks of life. And they all come together to, you know, really plan the event and organize everything. It's really interesting to see all their perspectives and ideas come together, and then finally, at the actual event, seeing that all sort of play out and work out well. I was personally on, I was personally on the Community Service Committee. We worked alongside the organization, a local organization called Stephanie's Mission, to organize relief baskets for children and people around New York State. Recently, they were sent out to Red Cross Centers around the state to help those who are displaced or, you know, temporarily out of a home, whatever, just to help with the stress that would come. The opportunity was great. I really enjoyed it, and I think it really improved my skills as a leader, and I'd recommend it.
So that's all we have for tonight, but again, I want to thank you for the chance to present about our conference experience. It was a really valuable experience and I think really helped our council kind of develop our leadership, helped a lot of our students really become more confident, better leaders, not just in Student Council, but in their, you know, lives as a whole and communities as a whole. So I want to thank you again for giving us the chance to present. Thank you.
I'll ask you a question. Ask you a question.
Jimmy, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Jimmy? Who coordinated your attire?
The attire? So for the past few years, we actually have gotten Somers merch for the conferences. So this was this year's. You can see on the back.
Ah-ha. Okay.
But, yeah, we coordinated to wear it tonight. It's kind of a nice thing. It brings us all together when we have all the same kind of merch and stuff like that.
Good. That's the leadership.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for sharing with us. It's always so nice to hear kids making connections and feeling belonging and, and learning these valuable leadership skills. The second part of our Tusker Pride moment tonight is going to be moving to SIS. I wanted to spotlight the initiative going on at SIS called SIS Heroes. So each month, SIS proudly recognizes SIS Heroes. These students from each grade level exemplify kindness and support within our schools and the greater Somers community. They're nominated by staff and peers, and these students stand out for their helpfulness, being upstanders and going above and beyond to make a positive difference. These awards are presented each month at town, the town meetings. The meetings are held by grade level, and where they also learn and discuss ways to be an SIS hero through engaging examples, read alouds, videos, and thoughtful discussions. Some examples of heroes nominated for noticing another child at recess or lunch by themselves or helping out a fellow student struggling on a project in the classroom. Together, they work towards fostering a culture of kindness and to inspire one another to make a difference. And Linda Belger and Kyle Grogan were nice enough to send along some pictures so we can get a sampling of what, what these kids get when they, when they come to the town hall meeting, and I think it's a, just a great way to start instituting those practices at a, at a young age, so. Okay. Let's see. So I threw that slide together. Let's see. So now it brings us to our first public comment period. If anyone has a public comment for agenda items only. So now that then brings us to our Central Office Report and our Athletic Facilities Update.
So tonight, we're going to have a presentation by Triton Construction and H2M Architects and Engineers. They are, again, the architects on the project and the construction management company on the project. So I'm going to ask Kevin Sawyer and Mike Lantier to come on up. Megan, are you coming up too? No? Okay. Hold on one second.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to be here with you again, wishing everyone in Somers a fantastic 2025. We have tonight for you an update on the construction. We'll start along there, and then Mike will talk a little bit about some other activities that are going on. So as, I hope you had an opportunity to see before the snow hit the ground, considerable amount of work has taken place in various areas of your athletic fields, including the tennis court area, which is approximately 98% complete. The only thing that we still have to finish up there is some bleachers that are going to be delivered here in, in February and installed in March. And then there are some throwing events that will be worked on during the spring to finish those guys up. Those right now are about 30% complete. Over at the baseball field near the main roadway, this, all the stormwater management is installed and appears to be working very well. The synthetic turf field and infill has all been installed prior to the weather turning poorly. We're still waiting for bleachers here as well that we anticipate having in February and complete it all in March. And the last thing that we need to do over there is just put a connecting concrete sidewalk into the parking lot area, and then that will be completed in time for the spring events, spring sport events. Moving on to the softball field. The softball field is taking a little longer than we had hoped to get completed. The, the cold weather has not helped us to move a lot of the field itself. We still have to put down the flat drainage. We still have to put in some stone material, grit it all out. That's very, very difficult to do if the ground is frozen or wet. So we're looking forward to the spring and the thaw so that we can jump back into those areas and get them complete as quickly as possible. But the dugouts are, are being built as we speak. Those are still moving on, and then, of course, bleachers for all the fields and everywhere is expected in, in February and early March for its installation and completion. And that's my, my quick update on the current construction activities. Turn it over to Mike.
Just a quick question. Are we on budget with this, or have we incurred any additional costs?
We have not incurred any additional costs that are not owner-driven, not district-driven at this point. So we're, we're on our plan that we had when we, when we bid out the projects. We're, we're within our budgets.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have any savings?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you exactly what the savings are, but I can certainly get that information to the Board after this meeting.
There's not going to be much savings there.
Probably not.
Always like to hear that, yeah.
We, we like to, we, it's obviously our intention to spend all the money without going over, and so far, that's what we're tracking.
And the, the budget that we did have, we were able to get the majority of the work done that we wanted to get done, but it's going to be right up against that budget, so I wouldn't expect anything coming in much less than that.
So we're not expecting to go over?
No.
Okay.
If we do have savings, sometimes we can add facilities to these sports, like a tennis court, put on a practicing board on one of the fence, could allow people to go there, you know, practice driving, not driving, I mean, hitting.
Yep. If there was something left over, that could be something that we look at.
I'll say the tennis courts look beautiful.
Yep.
And they, um, three of them will be lined for six pickleball courts, as I recall.
They are, they are lined for six pickleball courts, yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Lantier. I'm an engineer with H2M Architects and Engineers. I have been working with Somers for seven or so years at this point, and over the last few years, we've been working on this comprehensive plan. My intention tonight is to present really where we are to date. I'm hoping to be as, as quick as Kevin, but unfortunately, there's a lot of information here that a number of us have been working on. If I do go too fast, please let me know, and I'll slow it down, and then I can answer any questions that you might have on any of the specific items. Along with this presentation, there is really a working sheet that myself, Triton, some of the Board members, committee, and on that committee included individual building representation. We had some assistants on the IT team, and we had some community members participate as well. So as I go through kind of the process, we'll kind of explain where, where we are to date with everything. So in about 2019, the school district was required to do their building condition survey. The building condition survey is when an architect and engineer walks down the entire building and basically notes any items that should be repaired either short-term, including life safety items, all the way through infrastructure-related items, and sometimes potential wishlist items can also get put onto this, this, this device that we call a five-year plan. So that was kind of the building box to where we are today. Once we had this full list together, we then prioritize and we put it into different categories. The categories right now really are interior, exterior, site-related, water systems, HVAC, and electrical. Once your, your, your district professionals present you with this list of items, we then listen to any future needs, any future wishlist items, and they get included onto this full comprehensive plan. And then we further prioritize and we budget, and then we try to figure out the, the financing, and that's really where we are today. So I like to include this next slide, just as a general idea of the age of some of the buildings. It's important to note that, that some of the buildings, some, some portions of the school that we, we're in right now are about 90 years old at this point. Yeah, 1936 was the original construction, so we're about 90 years old, and a number of the other buildings are 50, 60 years old. It's important to remember that as I discuss this capital improvement plan or this capital improvement future project. Like your house, there's, there's items that require maintenance, and when you're dealing with this many buildings of this size, a lot of these items are just too large to incur under an annual maintenance budget. So sometimes there are opportunities where you can put these items together, and then you could put them up to the state for a building permit, and then the state will provide you with additional budgeting or financing towards that as well. So where we are to date, I like to kind of just start with this presentation because it really throws out the numbers first and foremost. Right now, with all the items that we've prioritized, and it has been a painstaking process where we've sat for hours and have gone through items and pictures, and we've had discussions back and forth with, with, with administration, with the different buildings and the different professionals, and right now, we're at about $64.1 million. Those are all-in project costs for the items that we've, we've prioritized. Priority one, you'll see there's $0. Those were really life safety items, and in this district, we really didn't have any from the beginning. Anything that did come up was taken care of immediately. And then we had priority two, and then priority three, which is kind of a large portion, so we decided to further break that down in case we had to make some additional cost-cutting measures, which we did along the way. I presented about a year ago to provide an update, and at that time, we were all-in with all of our items, all of our wishlist items. Potential projects were at about $106 million. So, so the team had their work cut out for us to try to bring that dollar value down to be more reasonable. Where we are today, our, our anticipation and our goal for presenting now is a plan that's tax-neutral to the residents. So at $64.1 million, it, it is anticipated that there would be no tax increases to, to the local share. So moving on, I'm just going to touch on, on some really key items that are included. There is a working spreadsheet that goes along to that, that, that I believe has or will be made available to the Board, and then all of these items will be listed publicly in the future. On, on this slide, anything that's involved is an item that has a, a project cost of greater than $100,000, so I'll touch on them fairly quickly. You're going to see the same items kind of coming up for most of the schools. You know, I wish I was, I was here to praise about some new technology that we were trying to fund, to put in. You know, a lot of the items that we've included really are infrastructure, they're maintenance-related, they're items that we highly recommend, the, the need is there to move forward. So first and foremost, we have general classroom improvements. We found across the district that the classrooms, there's differences between each classroom of what has been either an upgrade or a priority over the years based on needs. So what we're looking to do is classroom improvements is include a dollar value on a per-classroom basis depending on the items that are in the most need. In certain classes, it's furniture, it's casework, casework, cabinetry within a classroom. Sometimes it's the lighting or the, or ceiling is needed, or it's sometimes just a general painting or, or, or flooring work. You are going to see a lot of flooring upgrades, and then at the elementary school, we do have bathroom upgrades. When we get to exterior work, it is a lot of weatherization, but the, one of the, one of the, the bigger ticket items there is that front entrance canopy. I can go into the reasoning behind them, but there are, anything that we're suggesting, there are reasons why we're recommending items for replacement or updates. And then moving on to site work, the first item that's bold is asphalt repair and placement. There is a very large number included in this project for general asphalt work. The district has not gone through a large asphalt project in a long time, and many of your sites are, are showing that it's time to do either repair work or full, full, full course down to the base course removal and replacement. Along with that is curb and walkway, concrete repair and replacement. At, at the elementary school, there's also a number of retaining walls, and the needs for playground updates and upgrades have been included as well, just by the age of the playgrounds that are there. We've included that as, as a priority. Moving on to the water system, just your storage and treatment plate replacement due to age on this, at the school. And then HVAC improvements, you're going to see similar across the district as well, some classroom unit ventilator replacements, some various rooftop unit replacements due, due really to, to age and, and, and maintenance issues and the availability of parts due to the age, and then, and then exhaust fan replacement as well. It is important that we do include in the slide, and the, the classroom unit ventilation is typically a one-for-one item where we're replacing an existing item, we're increasing ventilation to meet current codes, but at this point, we're not including air conditioning. When we did price out air conditioning to include it as part of this project, it is a little, a little bit more than $1 million per school, and probably about $2 million additional to bring air conditioning to, to, to the high school. So we did not include it at this point, but there are a number of different air conditioning components either that are existing in the schools or some upgrades that we have included for some large occupancy spaces as well. Lastly, moving on to electrical systems, you're going to see panelboard replacements and fire alarm upgrades or fire alarm replacements as well. So then, as I move on to the intermediate school, again, it's the classroom improvements. We do have some window replacement and repair here, a number of ceiling upgrades, bathroom upgrades, cabinetry or casework throughout some of the, the classrooms, and, and a number of flooring upgrades. On the exterior work, priority that we've included is, is a digital sign, a single sign for this campus between the two buildings. For SIS, S and SMS, there's, there's no, there's no sign to date, so we would put something between the two buildings. And then moving on to some additional site work, we have asphalt repair again, the, the walkway, there's a greenhouse area that needed some upgrades, and then again, playground upgrades. For your water system, you do have portable, your potable water tank replacement, just simply due to, due to age. And then on the HVAC side, we do have exhaust fan replacement, and then humidity removal for the intermediate school. Again, moving on with the electrical systems, it gets more of the panelboard replacements, fire alarm. That school is all electric heat, and many of the duct-mounted heating units are original to the building with a number of issues, so those are slated for, for a replacement as well. Next, moving on to the middle school. Again, I know I'm going quickly, so I apologize. A lot of these items all are, are important and have their priorities, but we have more of the classroom improvements, door replacement, flooring upgrades, casework again. We have the need for some STEM upgrades in this school as well, for some of the STEM rooms, the three STEM rooms, and then as well as the art room upgrades. Moving on to exterior work at, at the middle school and, and the high school as well, you're going to see a number of weatherization items that's keeping your buildings weather-tight, whether it's roofing, flashing, caulking, or repointing of your brickwork. There's a small area of roof, roof replacement as well at this school. All the other roofs were recently completed since, since 2008. Moving on to site work, again, asphalt, curb, and walkway, and then we do have a, a play area upgrade. There's been the need for, or the request for additional play space at the middle school level. Moving on HVAC systems, there are a number of exhaust systems, H&amp;V units, which is your heating and ventilation, unit ventilator upgrades. We do have new gym air conditioning included, and then there is a replacement of the three existing auditorium units due to age as well. Electrical, similar panelboard replacements, your main switchboard in that school, it is original, and then your fire alarm replacement. Next, moving on to the high school, it is some more of the same. You have your classroom improvements, ceiling and flooring upgrades, some minor upgrades to the upper gym, to your locker rooms, to some of your bathrooms, kitchen and freezer, your walk-ins. There, there's a need, just, they're not adequate in size right now for the, for the current, for the current use. Science room upgrades and, and general auditorium upgrades. For the exterior work, it's weatherization, some minor window replacement, and then facade repairs. The site work, again, is your asphalt, your curbs, your, your walkways, track resurfacing. It's been a number of years the track is due to, to, to have that replacement of the surface. Lighting for Turf One and Turf Two. Turf One has existing lighting that is not LED, so we would look to upgrade those, and then we would look to put lighting onto the other turf field. Press box replacements included as well, and then some reconfiguration and replacement to that upper rear gym entrance area. to that upper rear gym entrance area. The HVAC systems, again, we have the unit vent replacements. We are including that large space, which is the Student Life Center for air conditioning. When it was constructed, it did, it only included ventilation and it's been voiced that there is the need at that school to have that area cooled. And then, moving on to the auditorium rooftop, that's a replacement, the wrestling room, exhaust upgrades in that lower wrestling area, and then engineering lab, air conditioning upgrades. There is air conditioning existing in that space, but the system is slated for replacement. And then, a big issue that has been plaguing the school is the lower-level boilers. Every year, there's serious maintenance issues time and time again with the systems that are down there. And then quickly, moving on to the rear transportation area. Not much work here, but there is some work. Again, it's your asphalt replacement and repair work. There is storm water management rehab. There's a system down there that has a filter or media that is slated for replacement. And then there's the need for bus wash upgrades as well. And then down in that system, down in that area, there is currently a security system, but it's a standalone system, so we've included some value in there to put it on to the full district security network. Moving on to the next slide, so as I mentioned before, you know, about a year ago, we were at a hundred and six million dollars. We further met and when Triton was brought onboard, Triton looks at the cost of construction and they put in what they assumed their value to be and then we looked to further prioritize. So about probably two months ago, we were sitting somewhere around probably eighty million dollars and we met further with each school to come up really with a plan and to prioritize and be able to put forward a tax-neutral plan to the board. Some of the items that we really struggled with removing are included on this list, which I'll go through. We discussed at the elementary school, a four-classroom building addition. The need was there due to availability of space with current operations and we kind of went back and forth and that carried a fairly high value, so we did end up removing that one. At the intermediate school, we originally had exterior door replacement on there. We walked it again, an architect and engineer, Triton walked it as well, and we all agreed with the recent upgrades that you guys have done with your door hardware and then as part of your security filming project and then now as part of your energy performance contract, the feeling is there that you're going to get more than even a minimum of five years on these doors that are currently there. So we removed those recently. Another item that we had included was a pickup and a drop-off lane between these two schools. For that timing, when parent pickup happens, we know it can be pretty chaotic out there. So we did include an item in there for that, but unfortunately, we did remove it just because of the cost to the benefit. There was a significant cost for an extra strip in that location. Cafeteria upgrades, this one, you know, we revisited it. The cafeteria looks like it's in good shape, so we did remove it. We all agreed that at this point, the cafeteria was exceeding the needs for their current operations. Moving on to the middle school, we had some window replacements on there. We walked the buildings again and we found that the windows, we included some of the items, some of the windows on there that we know should be replaced, but a number of them, we reevaluated and feel that there's at least five-plus years on a number of those. The next is a third-floor ADA bathroom upgrades. Moving on to-
Just to be clear though, that we're still in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act even with removing this, correct?
Correct. I'm sorry, that was kind of the main reason why we did not include the third-floor ADA is because you are currently in compliance with your elevator that you have there. Moving on to the high school, again with the windows, we went back in and we were able to really bring that number down. We did just kind of more of an investigation. For some reason, there are a few windows that have not been replaced. Some of them are included on here and then the other windows, you have your window film, so they have been removed. One of the tough ones for us to do was the wrestling room. We went down there again, we've been down there a number of times. We all know there's an odor issue down there, so we have included a number to increase ventilation down there. The wish is to do something else with that space. It is very heavily used for wrestling and it's very heavily used for football, but it was determined that it is currently meeting the needs except for the ventilation aspect. Transportation area, we had an opportunity to reduce the amount of asphalt in that area. We had an engineering report done. The engineering report found that there are some areas throughout the district where we don't have to do an entire asphalt replacement. We can do crack repair, a coating, or a top-surface replacement, so we were able to bring that number down. The last one, in the transportation area, we went back and forth on the state-mandated EV bus charging concern and the thought there. The issue that we really have is we don't have funding in place for the buses right now. We don't really know what that program is going to look like. And when I say "we," I'm not just talking about Somers statewide. Districts just don't know what that funding is going to look like. We know that there is this mandate coming. I can tell you from my side that the technology for the bus is pretty much there, depending on what district that you're asking. The charging side is still trying to catch up, but we really didn't feel like that for the amount that we were spending there. There was a clear benefit for a direction that we're going at this time for EV chargers. So now moving on, you know, I have a couple more slides and we'll finish up. It's really just to talk about the next steps and a potential schedule moving forward. So what we would look to really start calling this, instead of like a comprehensive plan, it would be more of a capital improvement project. We'll talk about the funding sources. The next step is really to come on this agreement, to come upon an agreement. Are we going to issue everything that's stated in here as tax-neutral? Did we want to discuss adding anything else to it that would not become tax-neutral as a possible second proposition? And then it's to confirm the funding sources, which we really are, have done at this point. It looks like that there would be, there's bond retirement and a new bond is feasible for this May. And then there's some additional capital reserve money available. As part of this process, we go through the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the SECA process. That's when a professional, environmental professional looks at all of the work that we are intending to do and they compare it to state-required environmental information to determine really what direction that we're taking as far as the environment goes and we disclose any potential impacts. We really don't see much at this point, but there is a process that really lines it up and displays all of that, so we would go through that process. The school district would become, would put out a notice of intent. We'll go through schedule on the next slide, similar to the process that we've done in the past with our other capital improvement projects. And then we communicate this need, we communicate this project out to the public. We're completely transparent about the costs and what's included and what's to be expected. And then lastly, we'd have that public vote for the fund appropriation or that, and the bond approval. So when we look at an anticipated schedule, you know, unfortunately, with what we do, we need to look way far out in advance because there's a lot of different stages to getting to, you know, breaking ground and starting the construction process. So if we're looking at the date, I'll start really with January 31st. That's when the facilities committee, we would look for any feedback that the board might have at this point. And then the facilities committee would present a formal recommendation to the board stating what items the facility committee feels like should be included in a future capital improvement project. At that point, at the next board meeting, the Board of Ed would pass really a resolution on, it's your notice of intent, that basically states that it's part of the SECA process that basically states that the school district is putting out this notice of their intent to become the lead agency as part of the SECA process. It's more of a formality than anything. The State Education Department is very clear that the school district has to be the lead agency, but the SECA Act requires us to put this information out publicly. So we basically notify, we do our due diligence, we determine what level SECA is required and then we put that out to anyone that potentially could be a lead agency. So that's your local municipalities, that's your Department of Health, that's the DEP, and they can comment on it, but at the end of the day, they can't become lead agency because it's a school district building. And then February 11th on that same date is really when you would formally approve the scope of work. I'm sorry, not so much formally, just approve that, yes, we're moving in this direction. The real formal date would be March 25th. There would be a resolution from the board to include a capital improvement project or your bond vote during the May date. And then at that same time, you would then formally adopt SECA. And then we have the presentation period. Your first one would be early April. Your second presentation would be April 22nd and then May 6th. This is really just a minimum. We would work with district administration to determine the best avenues to get this information out to the public. And then you'd have that bond authorization vote. And then moving into construction, I'm almost there, buddy, I promise. Moving on to, into potential construction schedule. Really what we're looking at right now is the ability to have two full summers of construction and if we have a May vote, we still have that opportunity to do this construction during the available two summers. So the design would start in June. Our SED submissions anticipated for November. SED approval process is about eighteen weeks with their project review right now for another four, so you're about twenty-one weeks. That number does fluctuate. Right now, it is lower. They were up to thirty-five weeks, I think, at one point, but we've seen them down as low as eight, eight to ten weeks. But right now, they're at twenty-one. And then we would see construction begin really in June of '26 and it would go through that summer as well as the next summer. We do have a star on the last one because it's obviously if there are other items that were included, like if we did go through with the building addition at Primrose, that construction schedule would go on a little bit further because there's a, the permitting process is a little bit longer and the construction process is a little bit longer. So I open it up really to any questions. I know that there was a lot of information there.
I have a question. Thank you for a very comprehensive report. On the schedule, I know there's a lot of dates that have to depend on outcomes of previous schedule and so on, but one of the things that doesn't seem to be entered in here is when is your interface with the public, the constructor, construction process that requires bidding of contractors and so on? That phase of seems to be totally absent in this schedule. Don't we want to public, particularly Somers public, to know the schedule so that if any construction contractors are interested in participating in our process, how do they approach us or when we approach them or what's the schedule there?
So that's a great point and that's fair because it is important information to include. So I would include that. It's basically between, on the schedule, it's between April 26 and June 2026. The school district is required to get competitive bids on any services outside of, usually the dollar value is twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars.
Is that done through Chris's office only or through you guys?
So H2M prepares the documents and then we solicit the documents through the school district. And it's all publicly announced of what the project is and when the documents are available and when they're due.
Perhaps, you know, we could update some of these things into the schedule. I think our public's certainly very much interested in this kind of information so they can participate in this kind of projects.
Thank you. Yeah, I apologize. I do probably take some of these items for granted from just the nature of what we do, but I appreciate any of that feedback and I will absolutely make bidding a line item in here for future discussions.
And I know you said it was at a minimum, the public bond presentations. You have three of them listed here, but I know we kind of initially talked at our communications committee meeting. Daryl and I were both there for that. We were talking about different ways to communicate this all out to the public, maybe by building level. I don't know if the board has any other suggestions. We were talking about different building levels, potential tours of the building so people can see really what the work, I mean, not going on ruse or anything, but like, you know, going through, because some of the, for instance, some of the building level meeting, committee meetings, when we were trying to whittle down some of the project, Margaret and I weren't present for those, but there were members of the community as well as members of the staff and like the administration who were present at those meetings and they got a tour to see what the boilers looked like, let's say, or the wrestling room or things like that. I know I haven't been to all the places that are listed for work in these, so it might be helpful for the members of the public to see what kind of work is going to be done. I now know what casework is, for instance, because I've sat in on some of these meetings. And I know that's something that you're all open to as far as how much communication we're going to get out there, because I think it's important. So people understand it's tax-neutral, but that doesn't mean your taxes aren't going to go up. That means that the bond will not add to your, the tax burden on the community, so different things like that. And while we're able to do this work, it's mostly because we have bonds falling off and it's important to keep that level of debt consistent to keep our very complicated property tax cap formula in play so that we don't have wild swings with our tax rate going forward in the future, if I'm not mistaken, right?
You're doing great.
Okay. Very nice.
But just to your point, there's the three presentations that he listed here, there's going to be other avenues that we try to get this information out there.
Those are minimum.
Yeah.
They're minimum.
I just wanted to emphasize that those are the minimum because-
Correct.
This is going to be a big bond project. We haven't had one in a long time and I think we definitely want to make sure we're communicating out to the public as much as possible of what they're going to be voting on.
Exactly.
So.
We also want to communicate to the public that like, going back to the building condition survey from 2019 and the number that you mentioned of a hundred and six million dollars, and we've been working at moving that down to within the sixty-four million dollar range so that we are tax-neutral, but, and that's a lot of work that has to be done. But the buildings are safe. The buildings aren't falling down, there's no, you know, danger to students or staff or anyone in the buildings, but this is work that needs to be done. Just like with your home, you have to do repairs on an annual basis. Things come to the end of their useful life and they need to be replaced. So it's important to understand that, yes, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work, but the buildings are safe.
Absolutely. I just had a quick question, maybe two. When do we, when do you think we'll get a report for like exact line item costs of what all this is going to cost? Like, you know, you have interior work, classroom improvements. Like what exactly is that and how much is that specifically going to cost the district?
So we do have it, yeah. We'll look to share it with you and then we'll determine how we're going to share everything, you know, with the public as to some of that cost. But it's a pretty detailed spreadsheet that goes line by line and has a cost associated with each line item on there.
Okay. Second, so just so if people don't know, you come in, you assess, you make recommendations on what should, shouldn't be done, what needs to get done, what doesn't need to get done. Do you make suggestions to our staff as to what we could possibly do of ourselves on those suggestions and just to try to maybe save costs?
So we do kind of on two avenues. Items that we feel that have cost-saving measures included to them, absolutely, we'll discuss, you know, like quality. We even talked about the quality of flooring tile, something like that. There's different areas where you can save money with the asphalt as well. When it comes to the specific type of work, what we do is provide kind of what our experience is and what we see other school districts doing, but we really look primarily feedback from the school district. You know, we can tell you what works for a lot of schools, but every district really has their own unique needs, so we look more from feedback to you guys. So it really is, it's that two-way communication.
There were plenty of items on that list that we ended up removing figuring we would be able to do some of it ourselves. And some of it, like even some of the flooring, it's just on such a large scale that we might, we're not going to be able to do, you know, an entire building, you know, in one summer or anything like that.
We're taking a look at that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
What they suggested, okay, we could, our staff can maybe do X, Y, and Z, that can come off and...
There was stuff that already came off the list just because it had gotten done from the time of the building condition survey to the time where we started looking at that list. So just to back up for a minute, actually, this could be helpful. Everyone met as a steering committee first and foremost. Once H2M and Triton were appointed, we met as a steering committee. Margaret and I are on that committee, along with all of the building administrators, basically. So, and we would go building by building and looking through those different budgets, what could be priorities, what already was done. And then they went down to the building level and had committees there where it represented, like I said, it was representative of community members along with staff and the administration so that they could look at what the priorities were there, and they kind of looked more nitty-gritty at each building. And then we came back together again as a steering committee a couple more times to try and really figure out the priorities based on those conversations as well of what to keep in and push out.
And what we could self-perform.
Yeah.
Because we have a really talented staff.
Yep, we sure do. So that's been a huge cost savings, I feel like, too, as well. So that's kind of how we got from $106 million a year ago to $64 million now.
Yeah, this complexity and involves all the schools and the public. Perhaps we should consider creating an information site that contains the scheduling, contains committee meetings, contains, you know, input or feedback from different constituents. I think one place so that we could, oh, this is a construction site, we go in, we will know what's things that have been moved, schedule, progress, and so on. If people wanted to be participating, they know where to go. I think we do have that kind of, you know, it's a big project that would help us communicate and understand and save money and so on and so forth.
We looked at that. The communications committee looked at that and had a website to...
We're going to have a whole separate, just like we do with the superintendent search, there's going to be a whole separate tab for just the bond project on our website.
Capital project, yeah.
Correct.
I'm going to add that H2M and Triton created a ROM, a rough order of magnitude of the scope, and when we get the bids, then we'll really get those prices.
Yeah.
So that'll be good to know.
So, what else? Have any other questions for H2M and Triton? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So Chris, we're going to have another steering committee meeting at the end of the month. Is that true? Is that with the building facilities?
Yeah, we can, we'll discuss if we need to have another meeting, or if we're kind of good where we're at, and then we'll just make that kind of formal recommendation.
I just want to make sure I put things in my calendar, that's all. That was, okay, now we go to Chris with the proposed '25-'26 budget non-instructional items.
All right. Thank you all. So tonight, again, as the manager said, we're going to look at the non-instructional budget as we have in years past. This is our kind of first really dive into the budget. The budget presentation done in December was really a high-level overview. There were still a lot of unknowns. There are still some unknowns, but we're getting a little further along in the process, so we'll start with our non-instructional budget tonight. We got our budget development process. We'll go through our audit, legal, and insurance expenditures, technology, buildings and grounds, safety and security is included in that, buildings and grounds department, transportation, and benefits. So just again, to review our annual budget cycle, it starts well before these last couple months, but we've been in the kind of preparation phase where we've met with different stakeholders, and now we're really compiling all those insights and prioritizing budget desires and looking at preparing a recommended budget here. Again, all leading up to a budget and trustee vote on May 20th. This is one of my favorite slides that I have every year, just to remind people that the budget when building it needs to be balanced. So our revenues need to match our expenditures. Again, some of the larger revenues on the left side, you have property taxes, state aid, and sales tax. And on the expenditure side, we have salary and benefits, transportation, and debt service. All right, so the first area we're going to take a look at is our audit, legal, and insurance expenditures. So audit and legal, you see from the current budget, $185,000. Proposed budget for next year is $187,000. Not a very large difference there. The large increase you'll see here is in insurance. You see the last few years, it's gone up quite a bit. That's been happening across the state with some of these insurance companies. It is something that we're going to monitor and really look at to see if there's any other opportunities out there to really drive some of those costs down. But a lot of these insurance companies have been hit hard over the last few years with some claims, so right now, we're just kind of weathering the storm with, when it comes to insurance. And this insurance covers all of our kind of general liability, commercial and auto and crime and cybersecurity. Student accident insurance is included in that number as well. So the next area is technology. So last year, we changed the way we did these presentations a little bit. So we've had each of the leaders in these departments come up and speak to their budgets and their services that they provide. So we'll go through some of the numbers, and then I'll ask Kim Blau, our director of technology, to come up and speak to some of the services that the tech department provides to the district. So looking at some of the salary, some of the expenditures for technology, just that first line with salaries, you just note the asterisk at the bottom. You'll see the large increase from actual '23-'24 expenditures to the budgeted amount for '24-'25, and then the proposed '25-'26. The big increase from that '23-'24 year to '24-'25 was simply a reclassification of the budget code that was used for a couple people in that department. So it wasn't an increase of, you know, $170,000 in that one year. It was just a reclassification of the budget code used for them. If you remember, last year, the same time, there was a few more slides showing the large cost of BOSI's services and why that went up to that $1.6 million. So that, we had a few slides on that. That was moving our current IT vendor, Edutec, over to BOSI's. We used to pay them directly, and then we were going to move them to BOSI's this year. However, late in June or early July, we were notified that that was no longer possible. So then we then had to now pivot that back to that other contractual line there. So that's why you see the big changes in each one of those lines where it was going up to that $1.6 million in BOSI's, and now the other contractual line is going up to $1.2 million. So it was not something we anticipated receiving at the last minute, but we were able to extend our contract with Edutec for this year, and then we recently put out a request for proposal for the next year that we're looking, that we received their proposals. So we're just in the process of reviewing the ones that we have, and then hopefully we'll have a final number and determine how we're moving forward by the next board meeting. Other than that, I think there's not any large increases one way or another here. Our lease purchase is staying flat for next year as the previous two or three years, we've steadily built that up a little bit, and that was large in part to the help that Edutec provided in generating our five-year plan for technology. So a lot of that increase that we've done over the last couple of years for our lease purchase is due to the infrastructure upgrades that we've been, that we've had ongoing. So Kim, if you want to come on up, and we'll move to the next couple of slides here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Blau, director of technology. Thank you for having me. So on this slide, there's not much that you've changed, except for last year, we have moved one position from out of the district through to Edutec. So that's really the only thing that I want to highlight on this slide. Chris kind of mentioned that before, so you can go to the next slide. And then from here, the one-to-one device program, we have some changes coming up this summer. Starting next year, fifth graders will receive a Dell Latitude laptop instead of iPads. After discussion with the fifth grade teachers, it was, we all concluded that the Dell devices are going to be more age-appropriate. You know, the kids are getting bigger, so the keyboards are quite small for them to do what they have to do in the classrooms. The devices will also support smoother transition into the middle school, so they'll be more prepared for when they enter into sixth grade. So that's happening over the summer. So the implementation plan for that is that K through four, you know, continue to have iPads. So the kindergarten grade will receive brand-new iPads, and they'll have that for four years, four years, five years instead of six. And then fifth, sixth, and ninth grade students will receive Dell Latitudes for this coming summer. Then the following summer, we're going to go back to having just the three grade levels that will get new devices. So it will be kindergarten getting new iPads, and they'll hold on to those for the next five years. Then sixth graders will move along with those, you know, Dell devices, and then will be the ninth graders that will have, will receive a new Dell device. So it's going to help with the cycle of the devices. It's actually going to bring the middle school to a four-year cycle instead of a three-year cycle, which will be more aligned with the high school. So that's the plan for them.
So then everyone would be on a four-year cycle, then?
Except for the little ones. Yeah, close to it. So that is the plan for that. You know, really, the key benefit to that is the usability and functionality for the students at a critical learning stage. So that's what we're doing there. And then again, just, you know, establishing more of a sustainable and streamlined replacement cycle. So it benefited a lot of places. The other piece here that I like to highlight is the infrastructure support plan that Chris mentioned that we fund through lease purchase. So next year, we'll be entering the fourth year of that, and what we're going to do is the high school's almost done. So we have, I think, one closet at the high school that we need to finish upgrading, and then most of the bulk of the work is going to happen at the intermediate school. So we're going to be replacing a core switch, which is upgrading our backbone of our network, and then we're going to take care of all the smaller switches that connect to that bigger switch, and that's going to be improve connectivity and performance across that building. And then the wireless access points, which, as you know, you know, are very much needed in every building, so that's going to enhance Wi-Fi coverage and reliability across that building. And then we're also going to be replacing backup power batteries, just making sure that if we do lose power, there's some sort of a operation. You know, things are not going to get shut down abruptly, so that's why we have those, and some wiring that we need to do to, in upgrade for them. These upgrades will strengthen network reliability, speed, and scalability, supporting current and future needs. So that's what we're doing all this. And that's pretty much all I, you know, wanted to highlight. Anybody has any questions?
Just had one comment to tell you that I think the new website's looking really well, and I know you guys have put in a lot of work for that.
That was a lot of work. I'm hoping I don't have to do one of those again. But it looks beautiful, so thank you for that.
Yeah, the move to Edutec, this move certainly is very beneficial to our school, as you can see from the budget presentation. It's almost like a million-dollar type of, not million.
Well, if we could have moved him to BOSI's, we would have.
Quite a bit of saving. That certainly is a good thing. In terms of the shift, I think for us, as for, you know, general public, we'd probably like to know little more as how the school manages this whole thing. Hopefully, in the future, it's working smoothly. As a director, you are managing the school side of it. Assume the four people that we assign is per building, per school?
So the, we have, I don't know, Chris, if you can go back to the personnel page.
You have four...
So we have... Sorry.
Is that per every school, like Primrose has one?
So we have one split level one technician that covers SIS and PRIM, so that they have the iPads, Apples, and stuff. So he goes back and forth, he spends like about half a day in each of those buildings. We have one in the middle school, one at the high school, and then the other one is kind of like helping run and oversee whether they need like adapters, parent help us tickets. So they're kind of here in the middle school, but they're kind of helping the other four buildings and also helping out with the parents and student devices. And wherever there's a need, they run, he runs and takes care of that.
But we also do have...
We just get into it. I understand that we probably have a little bit of learning phase and so on, but it looks like that, you know, we could manage this to get better and better in terms of, you know, use of personnel, productivity, and the service to this different building, school, so on. Look forward to, you know, further report on this. I think suddenly, seven people versus eight people on the Edutec, this shift is a good move, and we'd like to see better results, okay?
Yeah, and in previous, in some previous presentations that Kim has shared, just the sheer number of tickets that each one of these people are dealing with on a daily basis, I don't think at the moment that we're, you know, over or understaffed. I think we're in a good spot.
We're really in a good spot, and quite honestly, I was looking at the numbers just for this year. It was 4,400 tickets that we got just for this year alone. However, a lot of them, we have preventative tickets, so that's where we have our technicians every morning go check certain classes to make sure the batteries are operational. You know, the network administrator, he's checking the backups to make sure they ran. We're looking at our cybersecurity, security mechanisms to make sure that we don't see anything that needs to be taken a look at, like needing quarantine. There's a lot of pieces that are moving, you know. Technology have changed quite a bit from the cybersecurity lens. You know, there was a lot of things that, I want to say, maybe five years ago, we didn't have to worry too much about it. So we have this whole new piece now where we really have to have all eyes. I literally have provided the guys large monitors that they have open those dashboards that they're monitoring constantly to make sure nothing was catch on any of the students or staff devices. So I feel confident that the setup that we have now is working. I can certainly share more information that's, you know, if anybody wants it, but we really have a good model right now working, and I feel like we have the, we're paying attention to the right spots that we need to pay attention, you know. But obviously, this, I'm always looking for improvements, so any suggestions I love to hear, but I feel like we're in a good spot right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Now we'll shift over to buildings and grounds, which includes that safety and security budget. So just looking at some of the numbers here, one of the things I'll just point out is the, that service agreement, other contractual line. You see the, about $120,000 increase from that '23-'24 actual expenditures to the '24-'25 budget, and then it's going down slightly for '25-'26. We've had in there some additional costs for the water testing mandates that we've had, and we have since put out a bid for that, and now have an actual number on what that's costing us moving forward. That safety and security line, that does encompass our four SROs, the one at each building that we have, as well as the after-school security, and then some of the night and weekend security that we also provide. That BOSI's line that we have there, that is a few various items. Two of the biggest ones that make up that account is what we pay for the services from Alteris, which is our safety and security company that we use, and as well as day automation service contract that we have with them. Day automation was the ones that did a lot of the work throughout the district on our safety and security bond. They're the ones that installed all of the swipe card access and the security cameras and whatnot. So we have a service contract with them that allows us to, you know, basically use them as much as we need to and replace some of the equipment that might be failing now, just due to the age now, as we're getting, you know, up on five years now that that project's been completed. Most of the other items... Most of the other items in here, just, you know, various equipment and supplies and repairs that our, our staff does daily. We're going to bring up Chris McCartney here, just to talk a little bit about his staff. And then Dan Carrato as well, to talk about some of the safety and security items. So if there's any questions as far as any of the dollar amounts, we can have that now and then I'll bring them up. All right. Chris, Dan, come on up.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody. I'd, I'd like to just talk about, a little bit about our, our maintenance staff that we have here. We have the six maintenance laborers that are responsible for the daily upkeep of the buildings. With, you know, especially this time of year, we have a lot of heat issues going on in the buildings. And, you know, our staff is really able to manage through the BMS, the Building Management Systems, and hands-on. You know, to Margaret's point earlier, we have a very, very talented, dedicated staff here. And I'm very proud of the work that they've been doing. If you've had the opportunity even here to walk through some of the suites that we did this past summer in-house, you know, and a good portion of the work that we do in our department with the talented people we have, definitely has contributed to bringing that number down from a hundred and six to sixty-four. And there's a lot of stuff that, that is coming out of that, that we will be responsible for and look to do in the next couple of years. And again, you know, with the custodial staff as well, the daily upkeep, especially this time of year with the salt and everything being tracked into the buildings, they're really, they're really doing a spectacular job this year. Chris, if you want to move on to the, the next slide. I can't even see that from here. Can you roll that up a little bit? I'm kind of in between. Oh, great, thank you, Dan. Okay, just really kind of want to highlight a couple of the things on the inspections list. The, the, one of the biggest things this year is the lead and water mandate that we have to complete. We have to do that testing and have it completed by the end of the year, December 31st, 2025. In all four buildings, we are actually having a third-party environmental company start that tomorrow. That's going to be taking place here. And at SIS, simultaneously, starting at 5:00 AM tomorrow morning, they're going to be coming in and taking first drawer samples of all of the, you know, the water that's available for drinking and also for cooking. Ice machines, bottle fillers, sinks, you know, in the kitchen and all that. And we're looking to do the, the other campus later on in the year at the high school and Primrose. And I think all together, we're probably at about three hundred and fifty to four hundred taps that they're going to be sampling. And, you know, to have that all completed, you know, by the mandate. Secondly, one of the other big inspections that we're going to be responsible for this year is the HARA triennial reports. And again, that's, you know, that's a book that we're mandated to keep in all of the buildings. And that, that monitors all of our asbestos in, in the buildings. In addition, we do a six-month surveillance. Every six months, we do a surveillance as well. But the, the triennial has to be done by an outside testing lab. And we're looking to have, have that done, you know, obviously prior to the, the end of the 2025 year. Lastly, when we met last year, we spoke about bringing the, the senior custodian positions back to Somers. And I'm happy to say, as you, as you're all aware, we, we were able to promote from within here at the middle school. We moved Stephen C. into the senior, excuse me, custodial position here. And it's basically, he's here, he has a, has a routine here, but he's responsible for, for this campus in the evening hours. And his direct point of contact would be, you know, the head custodians at each of those buildings and of course, then myself. And we're looking to hopefully put somebody in up at the uptown campus at the high school. Very soon, canvas letters went out, we had to canvass the list, there's a new, there's a new list there. So that's hope, that's something we're hoping to get done relatively quickly as well. And really, that's all I have for highlights there. Anybody has any questions? Nope?
Turn it over to Dan to go over some of the safety and security upgrades that we have in the district.
Thank you, Chris.
How many total FD we have on this ground building?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Good evening, everyone, Board of Ed. Thanks for having me. I just want to touch on a few things that are up on that. So on Chris's slide, safety and security, myself, coordinator from Alteris Consulting. And then we've got our four school resource officers. If you want to jump to the next slide, there we go. So our four resource officers are all doing a wonderful job with our buildings. They are very much woven into the fabric of each of the buildings. They rely, the buildings work closely with them and they are a fantastic resource for the buildings. Whenever there are any safety or security issues, I work quite a bit with those folks, as well as the building and district administration. We also have afternoon, evening security guards. They were with a company called Brager Consulting. Brager's recently been taken over by Allied. Allied Consulting or just Allied Security, Chris?
Yeah, it's on the, it's actually on the business agenda for later tonight.
So anyway, we still, we still have our same guards. Right now, we have four real good afternoon guards. I'm real happy with where we are there. We've had some issues in, in the past that they didn't, some didn't work out as well as we had hoped. But right now, I have four very good guards and I'm happy with, with how they're working out for us. Emergency drills, for the year, we're required by the state to do eight evacuation drills and four lockdown drills. Six of those, I'm sorry, six evacuations and two lockdowns have to be done before that December break. We, all buildings have them all done. What we ended up having to do is our second round of lockdown drills are normally done where we activate the system and we, we put the building into lockdown. Unfortunately, the two that I had scheduled in December, we had incidents that took place the day before that raised the anxiety in the community. And we thought that it was a bad idea for us to continue with those drills on the following day, you know, with the heightened level of anxiety in the district. So what we ended up doing was something a little bit different, where we ran these drills, not with the whole building, but just with the cafeterias during lunchtime. So I, I think that went over very well. The students got a chance to really participate in, in a kind of a practice drill that they don't normally get, we don't normally have during the lunchtime time slots. So I think that went really well, really well received, and they did a great job. One thing that the state added as far as drills go this, for this school year was notifying the community before the drill happens. So within seven days prior to the drill, there has to be notification to the, out to the community. So the building administrators have been doing a real good job posting those on Parent Square and, or their Friday flyers for the following week, just letting folks know that we're going to be conducting drills that week. We have our buildings are monitored 24/7 by, for fire and intrusion. That continues as always. We have approximately 300 cameras that we had from that bond, that safety and security bond, the last real big upgrade that we did. And we're always, I'm always between myself and the, and our SROs. We're looking for things that might be, get overlooked. So as we're always assessing the school, we realized that we had some blind spot here at the middle school out in front, in front by 202 side. And we added, just added over Christmas break, two new cameras out there to give us a better view of, of that area. So we're always kind of, and we use these drills to help do that, too. When we run the drills, you know, do we get reports on, you know, not hearing properly? We did an upgrade over last spring of the speaker system here at the middle school. They did a, Chris did a great job having the company come in and we did a whole, additional speakers were added and made a world of difference, it's been really good. So we're always kind of assessing where we, what we need to get or what we need to do. We also have swipe card access for the interior, exterior doors, the last bullet there. And that is, including the exterior doors where you need to swipe out. We have the door alarms that are always active during the school day. So this helps us, let us know if somebody leaves when they're not supposed to. Or, you know, a student leaves, and so we want to be, make sure that we, we know that. Or if a juror's left the jar, sometimes the doors will just not close properly and we'll get a held alarm, then we're able to go and make sure that the door is secure. So those alarms have been working outstanding. We've already started, Alteris, our company, has started updating our district and our building emergency response plans. Those are a lot of work over the springtime. And then we meet with our building emergency response teams and our district emergency response team and going through those plans and make sure that everybody is aware of what those updates are. So actually, we just started last week with those. So my company helps get those, make sure that anything that the state adds or requires in those plans is met. Make sure they're in compliance at all times. That's all I have, any questions from the board?
I have a question. We, we have 22 bus monitors that are part-time. At this point, what sort of, sort of orientation that we, as from the school district point of view, providing to this bus monitors?
Is that in the transportation section? We're not there yet.
Not yet?
No, we're in, we're in safety and security right now, buildings and grounds.
All right.
I do know that they do get training, I've talked to Gerard about that, but Gerard has the actual facts of what that training consists of.
I just want to say thank you both for, you know, our buildings are so well-maintained and I know they're also very safe and secure. So thank you for, for all of that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan, thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Now we'll move over to the transportation budget. Just as a reminder, we do contract out our transportation to Royal Coach. So you can see that that's the, the largest expenditure on this slide here, contract transportation. The, the first line there, salaries, just so everyone's aware. So even though we contract out the transportation and the drivers are covered by Royal Coach, the bus monitors are Somers employees. And then we also have a transportation supervisor and then some office support as well. So that's what's in that salaries lines, salary lines, it does not include any drivers. And you can just note the little asterisk for next year, just a reduction of two bus monitor positions that are no longer needed for the current routes that we have.
So those salaries cover the 22 part-time bus monitors or?
Yep, 22 part-time bus monitors. And then, like I said, the transportation supervisor and the office support for, for that.
Okay.
Where's the?
Chris, I guess you, you understand the reason I asked the previous question on the bus monitor, providing orientations on, what, what are we currently doing and what are we going to do in the future year?
Yep, so annual training for bus monitors, there's a two-hour refresher training twice a year. There's also some de-escalation training that they've received. And then effective student management on the school bus. And then we've also, this year, provided some additional training to our monitors on special education students with special needs, especially non-verbal students. So that'll be an ongoing training that they also receive annually.
Do we provide any guidance to the bus company for their drivers' training?
So the drivers also go through similar type training every year that they're required to do. If there's anything additional that we'd want them to do, yeah, we can make suggestions, but they are.
So we could make suggestions on, you know, their training program?
Yep.
Okay.
And then just going back quickly again, we do have that assistant director of transportation. We have administrative assistant. And then the 22 part-time bus monitors that are all Somers employees. And then Royal Coach, we have the part-time bus drivers. Then down at the bus garage, there's also a terminal manager, a dispatcher, a safety manager, and then two mechanics that are all employed by Royal Coach.
Just real quick, back to the expenses.
Yep.
What is the cost of our gas and where is it in here?
The cost of gas is in that contract transportation. So the way we do it with Royal Coach is we calculate an amount based on the routes that we put out each year. And then that'll determine the amount of fuel that we'll provide to them each year. Anything, so that's for the home-to-school transportation. And then anything that kind of goes above that amount, then Royal Coach would be responsible for the fuel.
So to sporting events and stuff like that?
Yep.
They pay for?
If it's, goes above where we've calculated, then yeah, they would be paying for that.
But you calculate that into the, I'm assuming you calculate the sporting events and things or?
So we do, there's a, an amount per mile that they end up getting, or how many gallons per mile calculation. But it is for the home-to-school. So anything outside of that, so like athletic trips or field trips, that would ultimately then fall back to the contractor.
Okay.
Do you have a number?
How many, I want to.
The cost of fuel?
Yeah, I want to say for this year, we're somewhere around, say, eighty thousand gallons in total. And we do budget a little conservatively at the moment. We're, I think we have it budgeted at 3.25 a gallon, which is higher than what we're currently paying because we do get the state price on the fuel. So it's usually much less than what's at the pumps.
So eighty thousand at 3.25?
Yeah. Most of it's diesel, there is some that is regular gas as well, for some of the smaller vans, yep. All right, and then again, just kind of touched upon what we currently have. We have 34 in-district routes and then 17 out-of-district routes. Transportation also provides all the field trips and athletics and other co-curricular trips. And then this last bullet here, that bus patrol program. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we were actually one of the first districts to pilot the program in Westchester County. And that was the stop-arm cameras that were put on all of the buses. And then since then, Westchester County has adopted it. And it looks like the ticketing system went live back in October. And so far, in our Somers district, they've issued 24 tickets. We don't, we don't see any money for that.
They don't give a piece of that?
No, so our main priority is just to stop people from passing when the buses have their, the stop sign out.
But we also didn't have to pay for any of those cameras to go on the buses.
That's right, so. No cost to us, just hopefully get some people to pay a little more attention and not go around buses like that because it's dangerous.
So here, when you say 680,000 miles driven around, that's what you calculate? That, that's what you calculate for the contract?
Right.
Okay.
That is, yeah, yes. And again, so like this year, we didn't start with 51 routes. I believe we may have started with 49 even. But then as different situations come up where we might have to transport someone to another district, I mean, another, another location. And if we don't have a bus going in that direction or in that area, and maybe the timing just does not work out for some of the schools, then we have to look to add a route. So that's why we're up to 51 this year.
The 680,000 miles number is decreasing or increasing from last year?
It's been relatively flat the last couple of years. You know, we've reduced, you know, our enrollment's gone down a little bit over the last few years, but not so much in the elementary levels or even the middle school. It's really now starting at the high school where we're not transporting as many students as they get to the high school.
You're saying not having a direct correlation with the student population?
Not as much as you would think. And again, you know, we started this year with 49 routes and now we're up to 51. If next year we're back down to 49, then we'll, we'll see a reduction there. But a lot of it depends on how many routes we actually end up having.
It's really more about where the kids live, not necessarily the number, how many they are sometimes, yeah.
Could be a still indicator for, in terms of the cost basis for the transportation anyway.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to the last section here, which is one of the biggest sections of the budget, is our benefits.
It's your favorite section.
It is one of my all-time favorite sections, yes. So looking at some of the information here, so the top line is your New York State Employees Retirement System. That's for all our non-certified staff. We did show that, that is increasing just a little bit, even though the percentage that the employer needs to contribute is going up from 15.2 to 16.5. Then on the New York State Teachers Retirement System, can I have a lot of this actually on the next slide, too? I'll get into some of the percentages, but again, about a hundred thousand. I'll get into some of the percentages, but again, about $100,000 increase for the New York State Teachers' Retirement System, similar for Social Security. And then the health insurance you see is going up about 600,000 from '24, '25 to '25, '26. If you compare what you see in our actual expenditures for '23, '24, that 14.9 million, and then what we budgeted for '24, '25, that was, you know, about a $1.8 million increase. So for it to go up only $600,000 now next year is a lot better of a number for us as a district.
And that's the one on calendar year, not on school year?
So that, in that line specifically, that's including health insurance, that's all health insurance, including the Medicare reimbursement as well as a buyout for people who end up not taking the health insurance. So budget to budget, you're looking at about a $910,000 increase or about 3.28% of the current benefits budget. So this next slide just talks about some of the factors in some of these numbers here with the New York State Teachers' Retirement System. Again, that's for all certified staff, teachers, teaching assistants, administrators. That rate has not been set just yet. It is currently 10.11%, and it's going to go down somewhere in the range of 9.5 to 10%. They, they always give us a range to start, so at least we have a ballpark to go with as far as budgeting. We should get that number any day now as to what that looks like. New York State Employee Retirement System, that is going up from that 15.2 to 16.5%. And then our health insurance increases that we have here, so, and again, so that Empire Plan, that is for the teachers, that is on a calendar year. So for 2025, that number came in about 2.75%. That number was much better than the previous couple of years, but you can see in 2026, we're still projecting an increase of about 12 to 14%. We're still taking a conservative approach to that because, you know, this year it did help where we, you know, budgeted more for 2025 and then it came in, you know, just under 3%.
There's no guarantee that it's gonna stay at that single.
There's no guarantee, and we don't want to be looking at it the other way where we're only budgeting, you know, 4% and then it goes up 10%. Because then it hurts us not only for, you know, next year, and then it really hurts us when we're trying to build a budget for the following year, because now we're playing from behind already. And then the PNW, that's the Putnam Northern Westchester Health Benefits Consortium, that's for everyone outside of the teachers' union, and that projected increase is 3.9%.
And these rates are set by the outside agencies. We have no control over any of those rates. We wait for the state to tell us what the retirement system contribution rate would be.
As well as the Empire.
The state Empire Plan tells us what the rate is for health insurance and Putnam Northern Westchester, for the insurance rate for that. So these are the rates that are applied to the number of staff that we have.
Yes.
And it always gets tricky, I feel like, with the calendar year because we have to really budget for two years, not one.
Right, yep, so we're, yeah, we're projecting what we think 2026 is going to look like just based on the previous years that we've had, so. And again, seeing that number come in lower for 2025, not only helps us out, helps us out for this year, and then you'll see, that's why the, the health insurance budget isn't going up as much next year, because we're kind of, we were already ahead of the game since the rate came in much lower this year.
Right. So that's, all right, just so they know, that's not something we can shop around, the health plans, that, just so they know, that's through the state and there's nothing we could write about that.
This last slide is just a summary of all the expenditures that you heard here tonight. Again, looking at a total increase of about 1 point, almost 1.2 million dollars. And a lot of this is, as Harry just said, a lot of it is in that benefits line and a lot of that is kind of out of our control, where it's just kind of based on the number of employees that we do have, and we're not setting most of those rates there, so. Next presentation will be on the instructional budget and keeping like what we did last year, we'll have each of the building principals here to speak to some of the services and programs that they have each, each one of their schools and then as well as, you know, the dollar amounts associated with each school. Similar, again, similar structure to what we had tonight and it'll mimic what we did last year. And I know we talked, or we had a presentation tonight on the upcoming potential bond project that we're going to ask the voters to approve in May. Again, just to kind of summarize that, we're looking at approximate size of the project being 64 million. If we keep within that 64 million, it is going to be a cost-neutral project where we do have that debt falling off and we'll replace it with this new debt, so there'll be no additional cost tax payers. We also do have that capital reserve fund for about 1.8 million, which is included in that current, that total 64 million. So the size of the, the bond that we might be borrowing would be about $62 million, but the total project itself comes in about 64. And again, a lot of it is that infrastructure upgrades, just items that it's come time that we need to really update. But again, the buildings are safe, it's just age-related items that really need to be tended to.
And if we don't maintain them, it's going to be a bigger cost.
And a much bigger problem in the long run.
And to be clear, the capital reserve fund of the 1.8 million, this is the money that was already set aside in the capital reserve fund that was approved by the voters twice, once to establish and once to spend last year. Now we have to ask for approval to spend this additional 1.8 million that's already been set aside.
That is correct. And then just, again, next, next presentation will be the instructional budget and then later in March will just kind of be that summary budget. April 22nd, we're looking at another budget summary and budget adoption. May 6th is the public budget hearing, again, all leading to that May 20th budget vote and trustee election. That's all I got for tonight.
Be sure.
For now.
For now.
Does anyone have any other questions for Chris on the non-instructional budget?
Chris, excellent job against the outlook first cut, really impressive, particularly out of this 1.1 million increase, which is probably less than 1% from the previous. And out of that, 900, 10,000 is really, you know, benefits, we couldn't do anything about it. So really, you have done an excellent job that, you know, the increase only, you know.
Yeah, we're trying our, trying our best to manage these expenses as costs continue to go up.
The remaining small items, it still looks like the three areas that we might still could keep an eye on, you know, I asked the questions about, one is in transportation in terms whether we could have some revenue-generating possibilities. Because, you know, we have fixed contract, fixed service, the bus is sitting there and so on, so whatever we could come up with was a revenue-generating, that could also help a little bit. The other question I asked about is, you know, the technology transfer thing really is a big, big help this year. Now we're in the learning phase to see whether administratively, operationally, are we on top? Are we able to further sort of make some savings there? That would be, that would be great. The third part is, which I always hate myself personally, the insurance cost. Okay? Every year, your house insurance, your car insurance, if you keep the company for 10, 20 years, they just keep on adding. There's no mercy to tell you, hey, you're my good customers, I come back, give you a, a discount or, or a bonus, nothing. So people have to shop around on car insurance, house insurance, all these things. If you don't do that, you just, at the mercy of, you know, the insurance company.
I think we already discussed that we can't shop around, so.
There's not as many insurers out there for us, but there are certain, there are a couple that we're gonna, we're gonna look at just because the price.
Yeah, I'm not saying we can't shop around, I'm, I said, my comment is to the public. And basically, you know, whatever, you know, this is a problem, okay? It's a, it's a national problem. Look at the California fire. Insurance companies is strong, you know, we're strong there in insurance. All these are insurance problems. So if we don't, say, oh, can't do anything? No, we have to voice it and tell people that we may be able to do something about it. Okay, that's Mike Ripes.
For the next meeting, can we just come back with a number for that budget?
Is he all smiling?
The non-instructional budget?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Well, can we just add what's on there already, Chris, or no?
We could.
Because you give the totals on the end of each slide, right? That's the total non-instructional?
Yeah, I can get you a number.
Okay. So the next up is our draft calendar for the '25, '26 school year. If anyone wants to comment on it, I don't know if you want to go through it, Harry?
Sure, we're looking at bringing staff in before Labor Day as we have done in the past. The first day of school for students and staff will be the 2nd of September, the Tuesday after Labor Day. In September, we have the Rosh Hashanah holidays towards the end of the month. We do have two full weeks planned at the December-January break. By starting school on the 2nd, by having the staff in before Labor Day, it does provide for two full weeks at the, the winter break. We also have a full week break in February. That includes Presidents' Day and Lunar New Year in that week. In March, we have a staff development day, professional learning day on the 19th, and then the beginning of the spring break starts on, will start on March 30th and run through the 6th of April. And by state definition, the last day of school will be the 26th of June. We have, the last three days there will be half-days and the 26th is a rating day. There are 180 student days, five professional learning days, for a total of 185 days. I'm sure there won't be any weather-related days, so the calendar should remain and set the way it is.
And again, it's like we're, we're told when to start and when to stop and we're given those parameters and we have to fit those 180 days in, right?
Correct.
Harry?
Yes.
This new, this Lunar New Year added, does that have any impact to our calendar planning?
Yeah.
It does, it does.
I like to understand that, how we sort of choose the vacation week and so on, the logic behind.
Oh, well, I don't think it's for the choosing the vacation week, I think it's that Lunar New Year happens to fall over.
Total days, I understand.
Yeah, it happens to be that Lunar New Year falls over that vacation break.
Well, right, the Presidents' Day is a day that we're going to have off that, this, in '26, it'll be February 16th. Lunar New Year is the 17th, so the first two days of that week would have been holidays anyway. So it makes sense to have the full week.
Week, yeah.
During that week. And it will change from, from year to year, the Lunar New Year.
Yeah, just like the Jewish holidays are different in the beginning of the used school year, sometimes we get them off, sometimes we don't.
Right, if Lunar New Year falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, it's not a date that's celebrated on the next workday, like some holidays.
Right. And these are, we go by the state-mandated holidays that we're required to, to give off basically at this point, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Harry on the calendar or comments?
And that will be on the agenda on February 11th for adoption.
Okay. All right, so we have, we're up to reports by committee chairs and meeting liaisons, if anyone has anything to share. Has the policy, when was the last, the policy committee's meeting, correct?
Nasty just informed us we scheduled the policy starting, so I, next time we'll report, right?
Yeah, we'll probably schedule it the first week of February now.
Okay.
I'll email you to ask you about availability to that week.
I know we kind of touched upon this during the bond presentation, but our communications committee did meet and to just being discussing different ideas of how to present the bond project to the community, Daryl and I were present and we, and H2M and Triton were there as well so that we could talk about the different ways to, to get that out, because legally we need to state the value and bond of the scope, as was discussed. So in March, we're going to be talking about holding, starting to hold those, March-April, starting to hold those town hall meetings in school buildings and putting up easels and we had all sorts of ideas. Obviously, we're going to add the tab to the website as we get that scope of work defined and finalized, so that'll be exciting. West Putt, Westchester Putnam School Board Associations, I know we had, we just had an ed law webinar on Friday, Harry and I both attended. It's very exciting.
Virtual?
Virtual, yes. We were in separate locations, I just know that you also attended. It was on cell phone policies potential because of what's coming from the state, update to tenure laws and, and teacher ratings, right? APR, thank you. And last but not least, but the opens meeting law, so I'll share those slides with everybody. I have them and I have some notes and stuff, but all good information for us to always keep in mind. And then on January 30th, there's a legislative forum that they, that Westchester Putnam School Board puts on every year. It's also a virtual, you should have an email, you can register for that, but it's just great because you get to meet with all the local legislators from the districts, the local legislative districts in our communities amongst our school boards, and they kind of talk about what's going on with the budget, because now the governor just released her numbers, now the legislature has to release their numbers and we'll hopefully somewhere meet before.
And by just releasing her numbers, that was today.
That was today, yes. Like hours ago. So we're slowly digesting those, but it's obviously not going to be a final number either, so I don't want to even go there yet. Any other committee reports? I don't think so, right?
No.
Okay, that brings us to our acceptance of warrant reports, statement of revenues, treasurer's report, budget status report. So accepted, resolved, and now to the meeting minutes, resolved at the Board of Education having received copies of minutes of the meetings of 121024, 1725, 11025, 11125, 11225, and 11425 hereby approved, same?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are so many because we had lots of executive sessions. Personnel consent agenda, resolved at the Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolved at the Board of Education having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo hereby approved, same. The cost of these services are contained in the budget of the '24, '25 budget.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Sorry, I should be saying that. Business consent agenda, resolved at the Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Chris, do you have any comments before we?
Just a few items on there, there's a couple of different amendments for H2M engineers related to a couple of the projects that we still are waiting to get approval on, including a chlorination system at the high school and then a water treatment system at the intermediate school. So there's some additional costs that are coming along with that because they're taking a little bit longer than we would have anticipated. And then there's also a donation for the James J. Farina Memorial Scholarship that we continue to receive funds for. To date, we've received just shy of $99,000 for that scholarship fund.
That's great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay. Athletic team merger football, resolved at the, that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education and the SOMER Central School District does hereby approve the merger of the varsity JV and freshman boys' football teams of the SOMER Central School District and North Salem Central School District for the '25, '26 season as per the merger application.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Harry, do you have any comment before we pass this, I suppose? Just to make sure that nobody misconstrues what's happening?
This is to allow the North Salem This is to allow the North Salem students who wish to play football, join our football teams. The North Salem Board approved the merger at their last board meeting. We're not looking at a large number of students, but they will all, those who wish to play football will join our teams at the freshman, junior varsity or varsity level, like they do with our hockey team and wrestling team. North Salem being a smaller district, needs to have opportunities to play sports that the students wish to play.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, this brings us to our second public forum. Anyone have any public comment? Appreciate everybody watching, right? Okay, now that brings us to our board comments.
Okay. I certainly have Tusker pride tonight, learning about the SIS heroes and listening to the Student Council presentation. And I also wanted to take a minute to remember and think about why we had yesterday off for Martin Luther King Day, celebrating a civil rights leader who championed justice, equality, nonviolence, and love. His work led to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, the year I was born, so that gives you some perspective how long that was. Thank you.
Well, first, congratulate to our football player. Go Tusker, go! We just approved that resolution, so show them how good Somers can be. Another thing I would like, make a comment about our school doing great. I read in the board newspapers about the New York State is considering introducing a new way to monitor the attendance of students in schools. Obviously, that means some schools are not doing so good. This shows that our Somers is doing great, we have excellent attendance rate, and that number alone, that data actually indicates several things. Number one, administration is doing a good job properly tracking it, and teachers are doing a good job so that the kids come to class. And parents are doing a good job, they make sure their kids go to schools. And kids themselves are great, they don't cut class, okay? So that kind of data point, I think, is, is great. And I don't care what kind of methods that Albany can invent, the bottom line is, it's up to us. It's up to the school, up to the family, and the parents. I really like to congratulate Somers, everybody. We've done a great job, thank you.
Thank you to Jimmy for student council update. Thank you for Triton coming out for our update. Thanks to Chris for our budget presentation, good job. Also thank you to Kim, Chris, and Dan for coming out and explaining everything to
I don't really have anything to add. Ditto, ditto, ditto. Thank you to everyone for their presentation. Thanks, Chris, for, again, a very, very clear budget presentation, and I also wanted to thank Kevin and Mike, Michael from Triton and H2M, Kim, Chris, and Dan for their input on the budget. And I thought it was also really, really great to hear this, the, the high school student government leaders come in and talk about that conference that they went to and the leadership skills they developed there. And I, I really thought it was wonderful, the way Julie, I think, mentioned how she was able to bring some of that back, that leadership back into the athletic department, and so that kind of cross-cutting idea sharing between different aspects of what the students are doing, things they're learning in student government, applying in athletics, and this kind of cross-thinking, I think, is wonderful.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I promise to keep it as, as tight as I can, but I, I did, I know this is one of our longer meetings, since we did have so much on tonight. But thank you to the architects, H2M, and the construction management, Triton, for keeping us updated on the projects, ongoing, and, and the ones in the works. I already talked about the Communications Committee, so we are gonna continue to, to pump information out to the public, and, and also give the opportunity to, for people to ask questions, so that everyone can understand the scope of the project and, and have a sense of where that money is going. 'Cause it is, it, it a big number, but at the same time, it's a necessary number to, to keep our buildings in the great shape that they're in. Thank you to the high school students, Jimmy and, and the others, for coming in. It was, it was so great to hear the leadership skills that they're maintaining. Our superintendent search process is continuing, I'm feeling very positive, as our board is continuing to work as a team and to find the best fit for Somers in, in the future. I also wanted to say congratulations to high school for being authorized as an NYPD school at nine and ten, grades nine and ten, so I'm sure we'll have a more formal recognition of that as we move forward in that process. But one of the other things I just wanted to bring up is, the last two weeks, we've gotten updates from the Learning Office on the literacy work going on in our schools. And so on January seventh, the elementary principals and team, oh, sorry, the elementary principals and the Learning Office participated in the NICE Ed overview of the P through three literacy instructional best practices webinar hosted by P&amp;W Bosse's. It highlighted research-based instructional strategies to support the foundational pillars of literacy under the Science of Reading framework. NICE Ed also reviewed the resources available to help districts evaluate their reading curriculum to ensure alignment with state standards and current literary, literacy research. The district review committee, Reading Review Committee incorporated these resources already, as they had reviewed the options last spring. And then last week, the K through eight literacy team met again with PLC Associates that we've invested in over the course of several years now. So over the course of those three days, they enhanced the instructional and assessment practices at both the classroom and tiered support levels, and then K through two focused on refining and understanding the effective assessment strategies for phonics and greater coherence with the foundations program that we're using. And three through five worked in small grade-level groups to strengthen their implementation of wit and wisdom, knowledge-based curriculum, which was the new program that we brought on this year to continue with our pillars of foundation of reading. So this week's efforts, and administrators and MTSS coordinators will focus on benchmark assessments and applying best practices during building-based learning walks as they continue to work with PLC Associates. So the reason I bring this up is because by September first, twenty twenty-five, all New York State school districts must certify their pre-K through three reading curriculum and supports that offer research-based instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, and oral language. So I think because of these amazing efforts, I just wanted to take a second and, and, you know, recognize that because of these amazing efforts and investment in professional development, investment that our board has agreed to put forward over the past two years, and Somers is well, has well-prepared to meet this date, and I would actually say, almost succeed, exceed these state expectations. So I just want to say thank you to the teachers and the Learning Office for this fantastic work, and I look forward to continuing to hear about how this is helping our kids learn to read and write. And I think it's important to highlight this for the public, just to see where they can see, as we enter this budget season, and to really understand where all of these dollars are going, so. And by that, I hand it over to you, Harry.
Just to follow up on that, we, the administrators met with PLC Associates today for about an hour and a half. Emery was in the district all day today, he will be in the district all day tomorrow, meeting with staff at the, at all the buildings. So we continue to have our PLC support staff throughout the district on a, on a regular basis. I'd also like to thank Chris for his presentation, and Kim and Chris and Dan and their staff for their participation in putting together their portions of the budget, and to Jimmy Galvin and the students from Student Council, have forty representatives from Somers High School at a state conference, is very impressive, and they talk about learning about leadership, they practice it, they come back and they implement it, as we, as we heard. Very important skill that they're, that they're actually using. And the last thing, Margaret, you mentioned the Martin Luther King and the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and the Voting Act of nineteen sixty-five, when you were born, I was in high school.
And on that note, now-
On that note.
Resolve that this regular Board of Education meeting be adjourned.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?